Welcome, everybody, to our commissioner meeting. And we'll start with Mel, if you want to introduce yourself.
Melody Martinson, Shoto, Oaxaca.
Matthew McCartney, representing the front of Casa.
Sidney Blair, representing Many Rivers Whole Health.
And I'm Kathy Thompson from Staley Engineering.
Melissa Meyer with the Teton County Health Department.
Sam Corralston, Commissioner.
Dick Snellman, Commissioner.
Joe Delwell, Commissioner.
Chris Hindley, Mayor of Shoto.
Lonnie Anderson. United Materials.
You can come in and have a chair.
Well, that's all right.
Come on, Lonnie.
I'll make the grand entrance.
Okay.
Susan Fleschman, Mayor of Denton.
Paula Jackman, the recording recorder. And I'm going to have you reintroduce yourself again.
Lonnie Anderson with United Materials.
Thank you.
Welcome, everybody. First item is the minutes from the last meeting. You had a chance to read them.
I did.
I did. I'm going to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to jump down because of other meetings that are taking place at the same time. And we'll go to Many Rivers Health Department. And Joe's been on that committee for many years. So I'm just going to turn it over to Joe.
Okay, so Sidney is doing an outreach with the rural counties. And she's gone to how many counties already?
Probably eight anyway, not eight or nine.
So she's come up here to explain how they're providing services. And hopefully that they will have somebody on the ground here in the future. With that, Sidney, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Joe. So I will leave some cards and extra agenda here, or an extra flyer if anybody wants it. But presently, we serve 15 counties. We recently changed our name to Many Rivers Whole Health, kind of in a two-part. But what really pushed that forward was July 1st, we merged or gateway community services, which is a substance abuse provider for the last 52 years, decided to merge with us. So we met for a year and planned, Joe was with us the whole time. And then we, July 1st became one. And we're doing business as Many Rivers Whole Health. We're still legally centered for mental health. So you can see the counties that we serve. We added a couple as a result of that union. Last year in Teton County, we served 15 individuals and a total of 85 services. It's not always an accurate picture of what we do. And I'm going to talk about that in a minute. That probably most likely represents somebody that's been on, a couple of people who've maybe been on an assertive community treatment team, which I will describe to you. And we really have not had a great footprint here for a couple of years since we had the Substance Abuse Council here. And so we hope to replace that person fairly soon. We've kind of needed to get settled with that new merge with everybody. We ended with a lot of merge. You lose people, people get unhappy, they make change, and you have to kind of rebuild up again. But we're in a good position now where we are able to look at bringing somebody back into this community, probably a day a week, and working with Conrad as well. And just kind of maybe we'll do intensive outpatient as needed, act classes, Prime for Life classes. Some of those classes may be telehealth. So what I see happening here, in the past, the commission has provided an office space for us to meet with clients individually. It's not really conducive for groups. So we'll probably do that by telehealth in the future. If we were to grow, which would really be great, it would mean that we might have to look for some other space. But as you all are probably experiencing, there's a huge workforce issue here. And it has also had a significant impact on our industry as well. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our impact in your county. I think there's a lot of services you probably aren't aware of that we do every day. We did expand a couple of years ago into the northern rural communities and started what we call an assertive community treatment team. It's called MATT, Montana Assertive Community Treatment Team. And what that, it's a team of eight people, and the ninth person is a prescriber. Eight people, there's a nurse, there's a therapist, there's a care coordinator, there's paraprofessionals, and there's peers. And there's an administrative person. And they're really employed, and they live and they reside in communities all over. So in Hill County, in Glacier County, in Shoto County. Our new administrative person is from Shoto, who goes over to Conrad, Ponderay County. So the idea is, is that those that have a serious and disabling mental illness, and this is the population that typically sometimes falls off their medications, or something was a destabilizer in their life. And so they struggle with that wellness. And so sometimes they become, they get the attention of law enforcement at times, or businesses, or they get to a point where they're so ill that they need to be committed to the state hospital, or go visit the state hospital. And that's really that group of people that we serve in this assertive community treatment team, to make sure that they're really taking their medications, that that's going well, that they're making their medical appointments, and really not very short stays, if at all, in any higher level of care. And definitely, we don't want to see them in jails because that's not where they're going to get well. So we really coordinate all of that across this region. We are able to do telehealth appointments as well, and can do that from Shoto. If we have a laptop sitting in there, and people can kind of get in and out of the room themselves, we can provide care for them and do. Do some of that in Ponderay, or quite a bit of that in Ponderay, is people come use our telehealth room, and we have an administrative person there that helps them get in and out okay, and answers any questions that they might have. So we can do psychiatric evaluations. We added a Medicaid-assisted treatment prescriber, which is kind of nice to find in Montana. And we have a couple of those, actually, that are certified and able to do that. And with our new merge, we have substance abuse services, as I described already. The one that I didn't describe is we have recovery homes that allow a person who has been, has gone through, that is sober, not using, but maybe they lost their job, or they're not working, and they need to find a job, and they need to find housing again. We have a housing situation where you have to have 24-hour staff in it. We have an eight-bed up in Kalispel, and we have an eight-bed in Great Falls. The Kalispel one is women, and the one down at Great Falls is men. And we're looking to maybe expand in Great Falls. The state is trying to comply with federal rules, and that means that they make these changes to rules all the time that in fact affect how we can run services. And they made a change in October. That means we really need to look at, in order for those beds to be staying, that house to be sustainable, we're going to have to increase the number of people that we bring into it. So our eight-bed facilities are no longer going to be sustainable. We need to move to 10, or 12, or 16. So we'll be looking to change that up. But I think we have a lot of services not in Shoto that support Shoto. And we also participate in a lot of family, veteran, and drug courts. And that's something that assists everybody in that legal system with making decisions about where they should go. We were a recipient of a two-year grant that finished up in February. It's called Certified Community Behavioral Health. And that is the model that Montana is wanting to transfer behavioral health to. So we did a demonstration, and we did an expansion project with kind of converting our agency to that model. It was painful. It was during COVID, it was during workforce shortage, it was during the merge, and it was during shifting to a cost-based kind of accounting system, and shifting to a new EMR system, a new record system. And so everybody's unhappy, I can tell you that. In our agency, there's not anybody happy. And so a lot going on, that's for sure. But I think that's kind of a good time to mention that. We're about 200-ish, 220. We have 50 openings right now. And so it kind of illustrates the need here of, you know, healthcare that's unmet. And you're going to see that everywhere, right? Even private practitioners have wait lists, right? And so we have to figure out how to do this differently. And that means probably using more peers, more paras. We recently are, we're rolling out a new program for people who have no background in mental health. And so there's a certification course that they would take through the College of Helena in MSU, MSU College of Helena. It's online. They join our agency, we give them some time during the work week to take that certification. We have so many months to get that certification done. And it gives them a broad overview around medications, and ethics, and working together with stakeholders. And that's how we're going to kind of build a different workforce, so that we have that reach that we need to have. Our goal is to become a certified community behavioral health site in Montana. And we're in line to do that, and we want that in the next couple of years. And what that means is there needs to be equitable care in all regions, all areas that you serve. So if Shoto has some unmet need, we'll be doing focus groups to understand what that is, and then build it. And of course, the challenge is, what about workforce? And that's going to be, you know, we're really spending a lot of time and energy thinking about that. How do we maintain who we have? And how do we really entice people to come and work for us? And so we've put some energy into an outreach coordinator that you will meet later on, or if you haven't met him yet, Neil. And we have, we've kind of ramped up our social media presence, and just the things that we do to have a presence out there. And that's tough, because it's not something that we've ever had funds for in the past. We use grant funds to kind of support that. And we're going to continue to support it on our side in the future. We also have housing. We have group homes, and we have transitional housing. And why that's important to Shoto is that those that are coming out of the state hospital, sometimes they've lost that home. And they aren't going to land in this community successfully if they're just dumped out on the curb, and they got to figure out where they're going to stay. So, and that happens all the time, where the state hospital drops them off at a homeless shelter, good luck with three days of medicine, maybe three weeks of medicine. And sometimes they lose that medicine quickly, and then they come to us at some point. So we want to do more. I think there's a lot of efforts on a lot of agencies' part to do better step downs out of the state hospital. But we have transitional living in Great Falls for that, for those folks, that they can stay there as needed. And then we work with getting them back into their community. We have five different group homes right now for those with a mental illness that are really not going to be successful ever in living on their own. Because the other side is, is that we have that assertive community treatment team that helps people live on their own. So it's really about what they need and what they want. So the group homes are kind of in two categories, long-term and short-term. And the short-term is really about how do we build the skill sets and the supports around them, so that they can live independently. And sometimes they're transferred at that point, if they really have a serious illness, into that assertive community treatment team, that is now all over our region. And so I'm just going to pause, because I have a couple more things to talk about, but I want to make sure if there's any questions. I have Tennessee to run this through this very fast.
Sidney, you've talked a lot about Shoto, but Teton County includes Bynum, Ponderay, Fairfield, Power, Denton. How do you outreach to them?
So probably, I'm going to say that probably most people are going to come to the hub of the, which is the office, which is going to be either Shoto or Conrad. If we get referrals, and they meet the criteria of seriously disabled and mental illness, we're going to serve them in all of those other communities as well. I think what's kind of happened, and what we're seeing, it's been kind of difficult to build up those teams, meaning that we know that there are more people out there with a serious and disabled mental illness that are not coming in our doors. So how are they getting services of any kind? And I think in some cases, there's been a reluctance to shift over, because they like who they're working with. And until they really land in a higher level of care, they don't really come to everybody's attention. So I think there are a lot of people being unserved. And so we've talked a lot about, you know, would we outreach to them? Would we, and the key is to maybe probably have some internet, and use a laptop or an iPad to serve them where they're at in those communities, to look at other. So if there's a referral to us in Bynum or Fairfield, is there a place we can meet with them? If not, we'll meet in a parking lot in a car, if we had to, or their homes, if we need to. The thing that we're, we are wanting to build is a response team to these areas. And really to be that, probably that person to, that's going to work closely with our law enforcement and our county health people. So if there's a question about what should we do with this person, they'll have a point of contact to call, and then if they need to, we'll come out and meet with them in that community. And so we've got that in our grant plans, and we're looking at how we fit that into our budget, which is really horrible this year, moving forward. So how do we sustain that in the future? So we have one person that we're thinking about to kind of fill that position, and then build from there, and look for grant funding to support that as well. I want to say more about that, but I've kind of lost my train of thought. Questions about that?
I guess, I don't know if it's exactly about that. I mean, I'm very excited to hear that you guys are talking about crisis stabilization, and possibly some mobile crisis response, because I think that has long been a need that has been identified in Teton County. And I think you'll find that there are some very willing partners to work with you on a program like that. I guess, I feel like one of the places that feels like is, could be kind of an easy win moving forward without necessarily having all the personnel resources, is just better information about the referral process into your system. I think in Teton County, we don't have public transportation. That creates a major barrier when there's nobody located here locally to physically see patients. And telehealth is always a great option. But also, I mean, I feel like you're talking about some other things, potentially bringing someone up here again, or figuring out ways to get them into, thank you, into Great Falls to see people. But I'm just wondering, have you done much outreach with our healthcare providers, with other parts of the system where these individuals might be identified, and then helped through the referral process into your services?
I think it's been pretty stagnant, and I think COVID has had a big impact on that. I might have met, and we might have had some outreach prior to, and I think, and that's where this outreach coordinator comes in, is that person really is supposed to be having a presence at the LAC meetings, and reaching, outreach in county health, and prevention, and law enforcement, introducing themselves. And so that's the goal. I meet with that person weekly to talk about that progress, and make sure that we're making those contacts. And we're looking at billboards, bench advertisements, just whatever's available to kind of get the word out there. Stakeholders are going to be probably the best start. And we, the referral process, so you triggered that for me. That was the thing I wanted to remember to talk about. So we, on our website, you can download applications for people. And there's a chat function that's going to pop up. And our licensed staff are monitoring that, along with our director that's monitoring that. So that, how do I, where does this person get services, and how is, you know, how do we do this? That's kind of in place right now. And of course, the build-out is going to be this person that is going to be the rural person that's the point of contact for the future. So I know who, it's going to be either or. And then the backup is going to be our crisis stabilization beds, that 24-hour staff in Helena. So it's a little bit farther away. So we know that in talking to people, that the biggest pain points are, what do I do with this person? And I just need to talk that over. And are they ill enough that we're going to have to take them down to the state hospital? Or is there another alternative? And so that person's going to be available to kind of talk through that. And so...
And that's a 24/7 position, then, to have someone available?
So the point person, we couldn't possibly stay here on 24-hour, seven, because we won't keep them very long. But they'll be there available during the week. And then the nighttime and the weekends will be the crisis stabilization, with the communication back to that person, and if follow-up is needed. So the new model, Certified Community Behavioral Health, in short, is all about a model of care, which is care coordination and follow-up. So wherever that person landed, somebody's going to pick them up from there, and make sure that they landed back in their community in the place that they need to. But if you think about it, what I've been describing is all of this continuum of care that you need to support all that. You know, case managers, care coordinators, residential places, vocational specialists, housing specialists. So that's kind of the build-out. And so that crisis stabilization facility won't be built until July. I think July, I hope to have a lot open by then. Again, I think we've kind of identified who we want to serve, be the point person in the counties. But until that happens, right now, you have the option of getting on that website and saying, what do I do with this person? And they'll follow up with you.
Are you, still have more to present, or?
I'll just make it really brief and...
I have some questions when you're done.
Okay, thank you. So we've got some statistics about our project for Certified Community Behavioral Health, and what it really did. I would just point out that what we're striving for is to keep them in the community and not at higher levels of care. And we found really good results. Of the people we served in the grant, which wore the serious and disabling mental illness, what that didn't serve is the person who has, is just have a depressive disorder that's not going to be recurring, or... So it's really these people that are chronic illnesses that we served, and that's really our target group. They're the ones that cost about 60% of our insurance, right? And so if you don't take care of that part, we're going to, our costs are all going to go up. And then I'll just kind of end with, counties can contribute by allocating their middle levy money for behavioral health, and that has happened in the past in Shoto. And/or they can allocate their earmarked alcohol tax funds to have substance abuse services in the area. And they can give us office space. And Shoto County has invested in all three of them in the past.
Teton.
Or Teton. Yeah. So that's...
Thanks, I answered one of my questions. So I'm learning a lot about the county and how it runs and everything, so forgive me if I'm ignorant. But so how does your funding for your organization work? Is it state-funded? Is it anything and everything, donations, or?
So we are 92% to 94% Medicaid. So we are serving the indigent. And not a lot of insurance, veterans. The insurance that we do have is probably more veterans. We've always had, we used to have the contract as a regional mental health center for the VA, for the alternative care. And then now they have chosen choice, but we do work with TriWest and TriCare. Not a lot of percentages, you can hear, a little bit of Medicare.
Okay. So are you, do you have a contract relationship with Teton County, or is it just? Okay.
Joe's been on our board, Commissioner Delwell has been on our board for 19 years?
Almost.
Almost, yeah. Yes, so Rayanna Shine, he's down there. And we're talking about what are we going to do, and what can we do? And I think, you know, the big picture is that a lot has changed in our industry, and the state has really kind of been delayed in supporting that. So there has been a lot of efforts, and there's a lot of promises right now to rebuild and have equity in rural areas. The Certified Community Behavioral Health model is all about equity in behavioral health. And you just have to show that you are, that you are able to, you know, get people in in a timely manner. That didn't happen before in our agency. It took three months out before you're going to see a doctor and get our medications. Well, that's not particularly helpful. And so, and part of that's workforce, part of that's what we compare our folks, part of that's demand, and using resources in a better way. So there's been a lot of change, and a lot's happened to undermine that system.
One last question. So you said that you were a lot funded by Medicaid, you said, right?
Yes.
So you have a lot of clients that are veterans? And how about like foster care graduates? Are there, what percentage of your clients are foster from foster care?
You know, that is not a demographic that we have measured. When you have electronic health records, you're only as good as that, or you're hand counting everything. But what I can tell you is, we have school programs in Great Falls that we worked with. And we have in-home programs in Great Falls, and we have FBS programs, meaning it comes from the state. For any families that are involved in, with Child Protective Services, we used to have larger programs, that's for sure. They've kind of shrunk down with other competitors. We have small programs, and they're mostly in Great Falls. In the past, we've had a contract with Teton County to do that service. I used to deliver those services myself. So it's possible to rebuild in those areas, depending on the need. Volume, the way that the funding occurs today is all about the volume of referrals. And if you don't have the volume, then, and you don't have county support, you can't make it. You can't pay your employees, and you can't stand up those services.
Thank you.
So lots of people trained around those services. And we have a rich history of 49 years of providing that whole continuum. Funding has had a big impact.
So I guess my only comment is, we're going to build a, we're attempting to build a new building in Teton County, and the health department will be part of that. And we put an extra office in anticipating that we could get a person here at least one day a week. So we will continue to provide office space for that.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, and I think that building is still a little ways out. But in the meantime, if there was the opportunity to explore similar to what's going on in Conrad, but some telehealth services that could be made available in the more immediate future, that would be, I think we could figure it out.
Who would be the point person? You?
I mean, you can certainly talk to me, I would probably talk to this guy, so...
Okay, that sounds great. Yeah, we, and you know, it's, we knocked on a lot of doors. There was a point in time in, say, prior to COVID, where we attacked churches and schools, and who can give us space? Joe knocked on a lot of doors. That was because, bottom line, we're sending somebody out, we're paying mileage, or it's their time that they're lost trying to get out here and to serve the community. You've had some private practitioners that have worked out, and that's great, and you probably need additional. I think it's really just knowing who those point persons are, so that for everybody else.
Any other questions? Comments? Thanks, Sidney. You get to leave.
Yeah.
But thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, I'll see you Monday.
Okay, sounds good, too. Oh, I have this for you guys. I think Paula should get the mouse pad, I'm just...
Thank you. It's not over $50, you know?
It's not really $50, it's for shirts, and cards, and pens. Paula gets a mouse pad.
Thanks, Sidney. Next on the agenda, because we asked the mayors from the communities to come in, it's just a change on the wording in the library program. I know, Joe, you talked to the county attorney, and you wrote on those?
Yeah, what came up was, Mel, help me, was it two months ago, three months ago?
About three months ago.
It came to our attention, I shared the city-county contract with the editor, and it came to our attention that the county appointees were specified to be outside the city limits. And we're having a hard time getting any board members anyway, so we agreed that when somebody resigned and the need came up, that we need to revisit the contract. And basically, on the second page, it says that the county commissioner shall appoint two members from the area of the county not within the city limits of the cities. And we just want to strike that not within the city limits of the cities, to give us more opportunity to get people on that board, because it's difficult, as you know, so...
And it still can be from...
Oh, yes. No, I fully understand the difficulty in filling the boards.
It just opens it up a little bit.
It would just give us more open parameters to appoint people. So with that, there's copy of the new contract, and I've got one for Susan, too. And basically, it just struck that... And basically, it just struck that, part of that one sentence out to give us more. So we thought we would just get you guys up here and you can go back to your councils and we'll have to get it ratified and then we'll.
Yep, I'll have it on our, we'll get it done on the June meeting, first meeting.
Once that happens, Will. Because we did have a resignation, Diane resigned. So it precipitated the need to change this contract to make it work for us.
Are you fully staffed now with all your board members for this?
I believe except for her.
Except for Diane. I think that.
Do you want to appoint prior to this getting approved or?
No, we're going to, we're going to wait.
All right.
We don't want to knowingly break the law.
Have you advertised for it or you?
For the library position? No, we're not going to until we get this contract straightened out with the city and then we'll go ahead and advertise. So we just wanted you to come up and go through it and.
Do you have a date on here you want us to put in here? Can we put after you and I retire?
No, I think we'll need to do it sometime this summer.
Yeah.
No, I mean, for this, because it says last agreement remains in effect until you and I retire.
Oh, absolutely. That will work.
That would be fine, yeah.
But that's all we had and we just wanted you to come up so we could explain it in person rather than try to do it. So if you have any questions, let us have it.
No, I don't have any questions.
You did, okay.
No, we don't either.
So basically, look through it and see what your councils think about it and if they're agreeable to it and.
Yeah, I'll have it on our agenda, either you get it approved in our next meeting.
Yeah, sooner would be better than later because we will have to fill that. She agreed to stay on until July 1st, so we have a little time.
Yeah, my next meeting's June 6th. I'll get it on there.
And we only meet the first of the month. Just one meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, we wait till June.
Yeah, you missed my other one, mine was Tuesday night.
Okay. But we appreciate that. If there's no other questions, we'll wait to get the paperwork done. We have one road encroachment. And that's install electrical wire under the road, crewed excavation. Alan signed it and it's on First Road Northwest. So it's your pleasure, gentlemen. I would move to approve the permit.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
It's passed. I had to do that one and then Matt didn't go. Okay. Matt, are you ready with CASA?
Hello, everybody. Hey, we're here in the beginning to match the attorney representing the Front Range CASA Cal. Here to ask the commissioners to maybe increase the donation they give to us. So brief history, CASA equals court-appointed special advocate. And I represent Front Range CASA Cal, covers the same counties as our Ninth District Court. Those counties are Teton, Pondraye, Tool, and Glacier. Each year, Montana children are removed from their families and placed in some sort of foster care. Children that are removed are not always appointed an attorney to represent themselves in court. The CASA volunteers are the eyes and the ears of the judge, gathering information about where the child is, in the foster home, and where the parents are. At any given time, there's 70 to 90 children in foster care in our area and that number continues to grow. Front Range CASA has one full-time director and has to hire a part-time assistant due to increased numbers of children coming into the system, volunteer recruitment and retention and training. All the caseworkers are volunteered and are not paid wage, but only reimbursed for mileage when they go drive. For instance, my wife is a volunteer here in Shota, Shoto, and she goes and visits most of her cases, they appoint out of your area of where you live, so there's not really a conflict. So she drives a lot to like Shelby, Conrad, Browning, those areas. She, and then those workers from those areas get appointed for the ones in the Teton County area, so you're not working in your home area, right? So there's a lot of travel involved for the volunteers, but they aren't actually reimbursed for their hourly wage. One example of the money spent, last quarter, we had to provide clothing and beds, yes, actual beds, to the family of kids, more than four children that had to be removed from the home. The kids only had the clothes they were wearing when removed. The relatives to which they were placed in a kinship rattle this time had the rooms in the house, did not have the beds or the clothing and the school supplies. So our monies, after having a email chain and we were, gather up as many donations as we can, we then use our budget money to provide for those kids. We ended up buying some beds, bed frames, school clothes, school supplies. So that's where these monies go that you guys provide for us, to provide for the kids within the systems. CASA in previous years has had a budget money from the state of Montana, but in past legislative session, two or three ago, maybe, we're thinking around 19, that line item got canceled and they cut all funding for CASA in the state of Montana. So now we rely solely on donations from counties and from individuals and corporations that donate to us. Historically, Teton County has donated 2,500 in 2021, 2000 and 2022 budget years. This year, I'm asking for your consideration to increase Teton County's donation to the written request from Director Sullivan of $10,000. I believe this tax money, taxpayer money, well spent, as studies have shown, that with the CASA volunteers speaking for the child, representing the child, the child leaves the foster system two and a half to three months earlier than that, and they are more likely to achieve educational success. If you need more information, please visit frontrangecasa.org or contact Director Sullivan at 406-576-7041. Thank you for your time today and thank you for representing the people in your districts in the great state of Montana.
So what was the thought process with the legislature?
I'm not sure why they slashed the budget, it was time to cut. At 19, you know, we probably weren't as flush, this was pre-pandemic. I'm assuming in 19 they cut it. I'm not, I wasn't on the board of directors at that time. I just know my wife was a volunteer and she said the state cut our budget. And so they just eliminated out the state budget, so then we went solely on donations from individuals in the counties who serve in our areas.
And just another question. Were you able to get any of the COVID monies that?
Oh, I'm not sure if they received any COVID monies through that program as far, because we don't really have employees, right? There might have been some health, a lot of health grants went to health departments and such, and not so much of the kids in the system.
So CASA's a program by itself, but is it tied to any other agency or?
No, they're individual, there's a national CASA organization which kind of sets the rules and the foundations to which we have to follow, along with guidance from the state of Montana. But it's a standalone nonprofit organization that was created by the district court system. I believe Judge McKinnon, who's now on the Supreme Court, was a big purveyor of promoting that and got it going in the area back when she sat on the district court here. So I know the judicial system kind of started it, got it going because they saw a need for the kids to be representative. Because mom and dad or whoever's in, whoever's, I guess, involved with law enforcement for why the kids got removed have, they get their lawyer, their appointed lawyer, you know, the state has their prosecutor, and then the people that are really involved are the kids and they didn't, some of them get an attorney appointed to them, some of them not, depends on your district judge. And so this program was created to have an independent person, not a lawyer, not a judge or somebody from the state, to visit the kids, see how they're doing, you know, the eyes and ears of the judge of how these kids are doing and what the best interest of the child is. CASA volunteers, they're the representative for the child. Yes.
What's the difference between what you do and a guardian of item?
That's probably a legal definition, guardian of item might be appointed versus our director hands cases to our people.
I think your CASA slash GAL, so court-appointed special advocate slash guardian of item.
Oh, is that what the GL? I didn't understand what GL was.
So you guys are GLs.
Okay, so we are. I'm not a volunteer, I'm just on board of directors. My wife is a volunteer, so.
So who picks you to be the child's advocate then?
The Director Sullivan does.
And like how's, what is his relationship with the judge?
Oh, her, sorry. She's just independent, so I'm not sure how she gets the paperwork from the court system. I just know that she calls and says like, hey Devon, here's another case, would you please take it? And so I'm not sure how the cases get delivered to her. I'm sure there is some sort of coordination with, with the, with the district court system to make sure that CASA does know that there are these cases.
Our guardianship and kinship came through Child Protective Services. That's how we were notified.
Well, that would be, because we're not actually, it's not guardian or kinship, right? We're just a visiting person that checks in on.
Yep.
Right?
And are these judges, like administrative law judges within the foster care, so, family?
You mean the volunteers?
No, the judges.
The judges with the district court.
District court judges.
District court judges.
So for our area, it's great beneath.
Yes, we just screened, so we got a new one.
Are there any other questions for Matt? What's a good number for you, Matt?
Oh, for myself?
Yeah. We'll take it under advisement and just see, you know, because we may have more questions.
Yes.
That.
Yeah, you can get ahold of me and then I also set forth the Director Sullivan's number in there also if you need to get ahold of her. And the website's pretty informational too, there's a lot of information gained off that website.
Yeah, I mean, we're not putting you off, but.
Nope.
We have a, a lot of dollars that come in and.
Yes, sir.
It seems like everything keeps going up, so.
It does, yeah. I just, I'm, we're establishing relationships within our counties. Apparently, I'm the, one of the first directors to come from, to sit on the board from Teton County. And it just lined up to where I was a new appointee and you guys are, we're right at the time of the budget year and there's a meeting going on, so it all fell into place.
Sure.
So I wanted to come and fight for two more cents for the kids and see if we can get a friend.
Well, we certainly appreciate you coming, so.
Thanks for having us on the agenda, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Matt.
Sullivan, right?
Uh, yeah, no, Matthew, sorry.
Oh, Matthew, sorry.
The director is Kirsten, I think you said Kirsten?
Kirsten.
Sullivan?
Kirsten.
Kirsten, and she's Conrad, I believe is where the rear office is.
So you said that it's 70 to 90 children in foster care in this county right now and that it's increasing?
At any given time, yeah.
Do you know what's causing the increase?
Uh, you know, a lot of drug related, for sure, there's no denying that. Increased traffic, drugs in and out of the state of Montana, I believe, you know, it's the abuse at home, so it could be, I haven't studied what more cases are, I just know there's a lot. I'm sure if you read district court dockets, you'd pick up pretty fast that what's going on.
Matt, is your 70 to 90 number for Teton County or is that for the?
That's for the Front Range CASA Cal.
That's the Ninth Judicial District.
Ninth Judicial District, yes.
That's four counties.
Yeah, four counties for the second.
We have, Kirsten sent us a breakdown by county.
Yeah, the commissioners have a breakdown that I was not privy to prior.
Yes, do you want that?
I'd love a copy of it.
Okay.
We'll get you a copy of it, no.
So yes, I guess I'm here as a follow-up to the letter that Director Sullivan sent.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you coming and like you say, we will take it under advisement.
That's what we're asking for, thank you.
So you want to table that?
I, I believe we probably should.
Yeah. I would move to table this until the next meeting.
I would second it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
We do the Sexton Award for the Power and Beck Cemeteries?
Emmanuel. They go by Emmanuel.
Okay. Old habits are hard to break. Anyway, we didn't receive any bids when it was advertised. They advertised it again and H&amp;L Ventures, which has the Fairfield Cemetery, said they would gladly do the maintenance at those two cemeteries for the same dollar amount as previous, plus $200 per few, for travel. So. I was just trying to get the total, I believe it's $1,100 for the year.
I think that sounds right.
But are you, for whatever reason, it's not, yeah, here it is. May through September, $220 a month or $1,100 for the year.
Does that include the $200 fuel?
Yes.
Kind of includes the fuel?
Correct.
Okay.
The $1,100 includes the fuel?
That's what it says here. Because it was, it was a.
So the, the original contract was for $900 a year then?
Yes.
Gotcha. I misunderstood.
So I would move to accept those bids.
I'd second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I did tell you that was H&amp;L, HL Ventures?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So next we have seal bids for Chip Seal. You want to open that sample?
How many there are to be sealed?
At this point, it looks like one.
I'm going to stab myself.
I'm better stabbing you than shoving it at me.
Where's those old people at?
Can I ask about the Chip Seal service? What is it exactly? It's something maintenance on the building?
No, it's on the Teton Canyon Road.
Oh, okay.
It's 18.2 or four miles and it's a pavement preservation where they go through and spray an existing highway with oil.
Gotcha, my cousin tells that, that's a little secret.
There you go.
Letter?
Uh, there it is. And this is from.
United Material.
United Material, Great Falls.
From Mr. Honey.
Pardon? Yeah, I know, but. You're going to have the right name for sure. And this is for the Teton Canyon Road, starting at 89 going to the end of the oil west, or yeah.
And there is bid bond and.
There is an insurance policy, yep. Bid bond, Travelers, I believe, is the insurance company for the bid bond.
Looks like there was a copy of the addendum there, so it should be good.
Addendum one. Okay, bid form. And I didn't see where the, it says when the project would be completed.
When they're done?
Well, yes, but when they're going to start or?
So we usually get scheduled after we.
Yeah, after your, after your work, yeah.
The, the contract documents have an end date of September 15th.
Okay.
And it'll have to be approved by the Forest Service.
Federal lands.
Federal lands, FLAP program. So the total bid for Chip Seal and the. So the total bid for chip seal on the Teton Canyon Road is one million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and five cents. I must have been talking to Joe. Did everybody get that?
Hold it again.
One million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and five cents.
So Kathy, help me with the process. Do we accept this bid or do we just forward it to Federal Lands? Because they're the ones that have to say yes or no.
What I typically do is take that, make sure all the math is correct. Occasionally, we find errors, not very often. I will send a letter of recommendation, likely to the county and to Aaron at Western Federal Lands with the cost, asking or saying that we recommend award of the project to United Materials. And then the decision is, is theirs at that point.
Okay.
If they agree to that, then we will issue agreement contracts and the notice to proceed.
Okay. So we, we don't have any action today because it's out of our hands personally?
Right.
So is there a timeframe? Do they normally get back to us in short order or?
I don't know about Western Federal Lands. I will get back to Aaron right away. I don't know if it'll be this afternoon, but tomorrow. So we can move that forward as quickly as possible.
Okay.
And are there any questions? Do you want to see any of this, Joe? Okay.
And you think if you got it, would you start?
End of, end of July, early August.
Early August, yeah.
Well, at least we have a bid.
Thank you for bringing that one.
You're welcome, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Okay. So that, that'll be taken care of tomorrow.
If you can just scan that bid form to me.
I can do it.
Yep.
Okay.
Appreciate, appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
I'll be back here for.
I'm going to talk to for someone.
He said Ellen and.
ID.
Buy or ID?
ID. All right. What's it all?
Anderson and Owen?
You got it, thanks.
Any commissioners reports?
Pretty well covers anything I had.
In public comment?
I wish there was something we could do about the air. But I guess we have to live with it.
Yeah. If not, our next meeting will be June first. Same time, same place, right here, so.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, there's, there's clothing for winter, rain, summer, there's no clothing for smoke.
No, that's true.
As a mom of children, you know, like you can't send them outside when it's really bad.
Well, no, yeah, the smoke is hard on.
Could you finish it?
Yeah.
People might.
Yeah.